May I open the bottom, we'll change the project budget, correct?
Uh, it would just come out of the contingency. So we'd still be capped at the same nine point five million.
Okay. And what is the, like, best guess to make a timeline for?
For putting it out to bid?
Yeah, and then for construction. Because I've got phone calls again today.
Yeah, so, uh, I'd love to say we can secure these easements. The four I feel pretty good about, it's really just catching the landowner and just kind of pinning them down to get them to sign it. They've all seemed agreeable. Uh, it's that fifth one, uh, where we don't know if they are agreeable or not, which has been no contact. We may finally catch them at home and they may sign it that day. We may find out that they won't sign it. That particular property would have a really, really difficult workaround. Because they're right at a complicated spot with a road intersection in the railroad there. So, uh, that one is kind of important. So when, when will it go out to bid? Uh, I would like to be able to say by August. And then, you know, the schedule we have on here, um, of, you know, starting this fall and continuing until probably spring of twenty seven is, I think, a reasonable timeline still.
You mean spring of twenty six?
Spring of twenty seven.
Twenty seven?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't, realistically, if we don't advertise bid till August, we wouldn't open up till September. You wouldn't award the contract till October. And then they start procuring their materials, they have to send us submittals to make sure all the materials are buying meet specifications. They may or may not even get a chance to start work this fall. So if they don't start work till spring of twenty six, they'll spend the entire construction season of twenty six working on it. And, you know, some of the restoration might spill into spring of twenty seven. Also, with the amount of infrastructure work that's out there right now, there's a bit of a shortage of contractors. So I don't want to set a completion date in the contract that puts too much pressure on them. Because then the prices will just rise or we won't get bidders. I think if we're very flexible with the schedule, we're more likely to get a contractor that says, well, that's great, that's future work for me, I, you know. I wouldn't have to add extra crews that would just fit right into my schedule and get us a competitive bid on it. So we're probably going to be really generous with the completion schedule. You're not under a consent order from the Department of Health or anything like that that's forcing your hand. And we have plenty of time with the financing, we now have a three-year window with that short-term financing we just closed on. So that would be the schedule for that. And then moving on to the border water district. As you know, that project now is fully funded. We'll start working through, um, the design and the permitting on that, uh, just as soon as we get the district formation complete. So what is on the agenda for tonight is the first step in that process, which is the board passing an order to schedule a public hearing. And that'll start the district formation process. And again, just to kind of recap, you know, it was a bit of a pipe dream, um, five, six years ago, to, to, you know, to try to develop public water all the way to the border. The fact that, you know, we've figured out how to phase it, figured out how to fund it, and have, um, all of it in the works in a relatively short timeframe for twenty million dollars of infrastructures.
And the main thing, because of your help to get funded, that was, that was it right there.
Well, we know if there's no funding, there's no engineering, so it's, it's a bit self-supported for us. So you just have those two action items, um, on the agenda tonight. The amendment to our agreement for the South Bracket, and then the order for the public hearing on the border district. Any questions, Barbara?
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming in. Okay, let's get right to the, uh, total of the June eighteenth minutes, please.
And the motion, please, Pat.
Matt made a motion, second.
I'm second.
By Christie, on favor. And put an excuse reason. Resolutions, authorize the city town houses that public hearing on August sixth for special meeting at ten a.m. And again, for the border water district project. Motion, please.
Motion.
Ray, and second.
Second.
And second, Pat, on favor.
Aye.
Okay. Authorize the town house to approve the MAT plan report directing with Bartlett Juiz to complete and supervise the preparation of the MAT plan report for all facilities, improvements, and services for the new water district.
I'm on second.
Christie, second, please.
All second, yeah.
And Ray, on favor. Approve the town council for the town supervisor to sign the contract amendment grant disbursement agreement. Amendment for project for original grant amount of forty-one thousand dollars.
Motion.
Pat, and second.
Aye.
Ray, on favor.
Aye.
Approve the town council to support the plan for development and construction of the zero-waition and less than clear power point in Messina.
I'll make that motion.
Ray, for a second.
Second.
Pat, on favor.
Aye.
And afterward, if any of you want, um, I got the slides last week for the presentation down in Watertown, I've got it in a binder here. If you want to take a look at the details by all the different people across the country who made presentations, very, very impressive. Continuing on, authorize the town council to approve the installation of three cameras in the town hall. Being billed on a monthly basis until completed. Motion. Yes, Pat, and second.
Second.
Christie, on favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Authorize the town council to approve installation of the access control system for NCC systems.
Motion.
Christie, and second, please.
All second.
Ray, on favor.
Aye.
Authorize the town council to approve installation of the new panic buttons at the town hall. Again, by NCC systems.
Motion.
And Christie, and second.
All second.
Ray, on favor.
Aye.
Approve the town council to authorize return of escrow funds for the Roosevelt Solar Project. This project was canceled, so the balance funds due after having paid, that's about thirty-nine thousand dollars. Motion, please.
Motion.
Pat, and second.
Second.
Christie, on favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Approve the town council to authorize return of escrow funds for care products. This project had been canceled.
Saturday, I'll make that motion.
Aye. Ray, for a second, please.
All Saturday, it's the second.
Okay, Pat, on favor.
Aye.
Now, approve the town council to authorize the town supervisor to sign the engagement letter from Bowers and Company to perform the twenty-twenty-four, um, annual review. Pay a piece for the eight thousand dollars.
Motion.
Pat, and second.
Second.
Christie, on favor.
Aye.
Authorize the town council to approve the amended number three B and L engineering agreement for the adjustments needed to be made so that hourly fee tolls reflect the actual time and effort on the services provided.
Motion.
Okay, Pat?
All second, yeah.
Ray, a second, on favor.
Aye.
Ray. Transfers and amendments.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Ray, and a second.
All second.
All right, Pat, on favor. Lawrence.
I'll make the motion.
Pat?
And I'll second.
And Ray, for a second, thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Going over to Brenda, please.
As of twenty-twenty-five, as of today, the revenue collected is five million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six. In twenty-twenty-four, at this time, it was four million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight. So the twenty-twenty-five revenue are eight hundred eighty thousand, four hundred ninety-eight more than July of last year. For expenses-wise in twenty-twenty-five, as of today, it's four million, six hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. In twenty-four, our total expenses was four million, seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-six. So our twenty-twenty-five expenses are five hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five more than July of twenty-four.
Anybody have any questions, Brenda? Thank you, Brenda. Let's do our reports, please, let's go to Town Highway Airport, Dylan.
Uh, for the highway department, we mowed cemeteries two times. We started road work in preparation for fall pavement. Uh, we finished mowing roadsides on six twenty-three. We pulled about just over two thousand tons of stone for the road work. Uh, we worked with Putney Tree Service to remove a tree at the library. For equipment repairs, uh, unit forty-nine is at International for electrical repairs. And we replaced U-Holts in unit fifty-one for the airport, boutique air numbers for June of twenty-five. There was four hundred ninety-two in plane, four hundred and sixty-three D planes, or nine hundred and fifty-five total. There was a hundred and seventy-eight landings and two canceled flights due to the weather. Uh, construction continues and is almost completed on the sand storage building. Uh, we continue to mow summer work, we have started brush hogging fields. And we replaced the carpet in the back waiting room at the terminal. The library, museum, and town hall, there are no new issues.
And the CNS presentation for the airport, that'll be next month?
Yes.
Okay. So, can you make a little left turn?
Yep.
Thank you. Joint Recreation.
Uh, we met on the eighth from about nine o'clock to nine-thirty. They interviewed some new hires, there was five people on the hiring committee, and the new hire will start August sixth. Uh, they discussed the community center and they're reviewing policies to submit to the village. And they were going to increase the hours of secretary necessary. Uh, new business frog jumping contest tomorrow at nine o'clock. There's three different age categories. They had the Alcoa Seana at the Alcoa Fields by New Testament Church, just quite successful, they had free hot dogs and drinks and games. And that went on into the afternoon. They're doing a Eclipseo trip to Ottawa, again, it's a water park here of Ottawa, that'll be out August eleventh. And, uh, they've got breast cancer tournament, softball tournament on July nineteenth and twentieth. And they've got three hundred and fifty-seven soccer registrations for the one-day, five hundred total, kids ready to register for soccer. The Seaway Valley Youth Council is putting up six signs at different parks, informational boards on drug awareness and such, at six-year-old parks. The next meeting will be August twelfth at three o'clock. It's at the arena.
Thank you very much. Town Library.
Library met on July eighth at four fifteen, was record time, by five o'clock, it was done. Good job, Christie. The, uh, the public comment, there was no public comment because there was no public. And the program reports continue to show increases in volume of usage, especially by youth. So it continues to be very well used, the same with the usage report and the visit report. Um, the financial committee was not going to meet till, uh, the fourteenth, so it met on the fourteenth. They'll have that report next time. Then, uh, budget proposal preparation started also on the fourteenth of the financial report. So they'll start their presentation, start their work on the fourteenth. I don't know if I say something wrong to them. And, uh, the policy committee was canceled, but then it's going to meet on July tenth at two P M. Brants continue, uh, especially with books, that was a really good deal on the books. I mean, you explain it better than I can, but basically the returns, you know, the grants that they got for the books.
That's great.
And then the friends report, uh, five oh one C three was approved for friends, so that they decided to utilize that, not the block status, um, through the friends report. Next meeting, August twelfth, uh, four fifteen.
Okay, thank you very much. As far as the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the ambassadors continue meeting and welcome new businesses and individuals who wish to join. This coming Saturday, reminder, July nineteenth, big celebration at the Sina Volunteer Fire Department's of their hundred-and-twentieth anniversary. And they have many activities, including cornhole, bed races, food trucks, a Nordebrass van, and six-foot midgets to name and view. And fishery, be reminded, the next major fishing tournament is next week, July twenty-first to twenty-seventh. Following that will be August second to third, ours eleven to sixteen, and September fifth to sixth. So a very, very busy fishing season, lots of people in the community, which is nice to hear, and I love to hear all the nice comments when I'm walking around. It's nice to hear that, yes. Um, as far as the code officer, uh, Pat had a family emergency, so he will not be here today. Uh, town planning or zoning?
There was no meeting, uh, there will be no meeting again this month.
Okay.
It's been four months now since we have not had that activity.
Okay. Is it electric?
Yes, uh, met on, uh, June twenty-sixth, and, uh, uh, substation was reviewed in regards to the work schedule. Uh, write-offs were a little higher than they used to be, but that's because the cost was a lot more, but the percentage of write-offs is still extremely low compared to the rest of the, the rest of the country, the rest of the state. We showed our, our graphics and very little, uh, very little power issues, the issue with the goose and that, the power, uh, a little wasted. As far as safety goes, it's been a thousand eighty-seven days since our last lost time, and, uh, reportable injuries, uh, three hundred forty-four days since the last of that. Uh, the, all the M E D, uh, staff attended the defensive driving course that was provided by National Safety Council. Customer impact chart, most little. Really had a good month from that standpoint, and were able to get, continue to get, uh, work done, uh, trees, you know, the trees, you have trees that you've just got to keep cutting down. And keep staying within the grant money that they receive and keep taking them down as, as, uh, uh, as far as, uh, everything is on course in regards to transmission congestion contracts and resolution and engineering, uh, maybe cybersecurity and all of those continued on our, our project.
To me, there's, there are people that do that have ash trees, can they contact the Sina project, whether it's what involved with the wires?
Yeah, I think it involves the wires, they should contact, uh, contact. Yep. And so just, you know, a note on that, you know, on occasion, over the M E D, they're getting calls about, what, ash trees in the backyard.
Yes, and that's different.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to be helping with that so much.
There's got to be the wires involved. Okay.
There'll be a lot of ash trees. I've found it all, of course, you see, they cut down sixty-five trees last year, there's a ton more that they're going to have to come down.
But just to bring that, that's it.
Yeah, that's not, that's loose, right?
Right, that's impossible.
That's not, yeah. So that's, uh, just, just, you know, there's going to be a lot of ash trees around everywhere over the next several years.
All right, uh, Jason, please.
How's everybody doing? Was it nice and warm out there for you? Keeping your toasting? Uh, so I just want to talk about Rock in the River. We're, as of today, we're now in our thirty-day window, leading up to it, everything is advancing just great. We have, we've had some changes with the Wannington Van Shell not being no longer available, so I always say steer into the skid, tune, and make the pivot, and always, and how can we make the event better? So now, this year, our sound guy was able to secure us a, uh, we're going to have a staging coming in, it comes in on a truck, we're going to have the trusses and the lights. So it's actually going to, now we'll be able to actually see through to the river while watching the bands play, so really excited about how that's going to set up the look for us.
Mr. Ryan?
Uh-huh. Our sound guy, Marver Productions.
Oh.
Yeah. He was able to, it's something I've always wanted, and the cards have aligned, or the stars aligned, I should say, in order us to provide that. Now, with that being said, without our agreeing sponsors, this event doesn't happen. Uh, so I'd like to give them a public shout-out.
Yeah, please do, that's good.
Uh, Boralex, Messina Savings and Loans, Northern Credit Union, Rochester Regional Health, Patriot Paving, and Liberty Utilities. And we have a few more that we're just waiting to secure as well, um, so we'll have a bigger list after the wrap-up. So without them, it doesn't happen, uh, so we're pretty excited about that. The lineup will be, uh, it's going to be a Margarita Mike Duo, uh, followed by Add a Ghost, and then our, our headliner will be Bonfire Tribute to A.C.D.C., which I'm really excited about personally. And, uh, the event will start at three o'clock on Saturday, August sixteenth, at the Messina Town Beach, and it's going to be a great time. I think that's all I've got, if there's any other questions.
And feel free to go on the radio.
This upcoming Wednesday?
Wednesday morning, yeah.
I'll pencil it in if I can.
Mention the sponsors' names, make sure they know the events to know.
You got it.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, going over to Don Meiser or Linda?
Okay, um, Don is under the weather this evening, he developed a, some type of viral, something in his local part, so he's, he's not able to speak. So as a consequence, I'm here this evening to, uh, provide details on his report, which was submitted to all of the board members. He reported extensively on the, uh, National Pro Fishing League, the tournament that we have just had, which probably was perhaps the best tournament that Messina has ever seen come to be uptake. The level of organization, the level of fish care, the level of, uh, commitment to the community of Messina, and the, everything that they did was absolutely top-notch. As a case in point, there were three roundtables that were held with, uh, Spanky's Restaurant, uh, Salvation Army, and then the third one was the St. Lawrence Seaway Visitor Center. And in each instance, we had, we had great representation, uh, folks from Messina were interviewed, as well as professional anglers, so this was really, uh, a class act type of, of, uh, program. If anyone is interested in seeing the, uh, the roundtables or the actual live feed, if you go to NPFL dot com, you can see those reports, they still have them up. And they're, you know, really very, very impressive, and I think the, uh, the tax monies that will come back to Messina for this quarter will, will really tell the tale of how, how great this was.
The people, the fishermen, all were so positive, said great things about Messina, said great things about everybody, the work they put in on. It was really, it was really good to hear how many positives and how excited these people were.
That's one thing about the fishing groups, they're all very, kind of, very positive.
Yes.
Great.
Yes, yes, they are. Um, and I would like to offer a couple more comments, uh, with respect to the dedication and hard work that we had from our volunteers. I'd like to recognize, uh, two individuals, uh, Ray Langto was out at the least small hours of the morning and later into the afternoon driving golf carts, so thank you, Ray. And also recognizing Dylan Castleman for coming out on his day off and helping with, uh, parking and all of that, so we greatly appreciate your, your effort, Dylan, thank you so much. One final comment on, uh, regarding Don's work. As everyone may know, uh, July twenty-sixth will be the fishing concert being held at Springs Park here in Messina. And the, uh, the tournament organizer for the B F L, which happened this last Saturday, Mr. Michael Bucy plans to bring as many of the anglers from Lake Champlain, because they're holding another event there at the same day. He's planning to bring them over because they're very interested in this concert. It's being conducted by one of their own, uh, Dave LaFever, a fellow angler, so they're, they're very eager to come over. So we'll have a lot of folks in Springs Park for this, for this upcoming concert, so that should be lots of fun. Uh, and so now for my report, in, in the report that I circulated to the board, I mentioned specifically that we have closed up two Market New York grants. So we received the funding, or the funding is in, in progress for the second one. Also, uh, I'm currently working on the consolidated funding application, and the primary focus of that will be on tournament funding.
And I don't know, you made the report, could you send me a digital copy in the morning of that correction?
The, the grant application, Sue?
The one for the, that you mentioned before about, um...
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Okay. It looks like it was... I just provided it, now we're... Pro housing, please?
Yes, uh, I, I have provided, uh, the, the resolution for the board's consideration. Specifically, um, they have changed some of the parameters of the Market New York program.
Yeah.
And they are asking that communities who are applying for Market New York funds, among other categories of funding, be willing to demonstrate that they're pro housing, that they're focused on, on creating housing within their community. So there's a whole certification process, the resolution is the first step in that.
Okay, if you could just send me, we'll be talking about it later, all of us will be, but if you could send me the corrected version?
Sure, I will do that.
Morning, okay, will you take care of that?
I'm sorry, last morning?
Send me the corrected version without the spelling error.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and will the board consider that this evening?
I, I certainly hope to get to it.
Okay, thank you.
We'll let you know afterward, yeah, there's quite a lot on the agenda, yeah.
Make sure to read comment, you don't think of Don and Linda for the actual work they do on these tournaments. It's easy to put on the calendar a tournament, but it's, it's hard to see the work they do behind the scenes. They just kind of hold your preparing for this, they work hard.
No, that's their job, so they're doing really well.
Yeah, I know, I saw, I witnessed, I saw their three o'clock in the morning every night, and that. Witness a lot.
They're doing a good job. Okay, on Krista, library, please. Thank you, Mark.
All right, so, Pat, no corrections, you did great.
Yeah, it was good.
I, um, I just thought I'd share some of what Messina has been up to at the library in the past month. June saw seventy-eight library programs with seven hundred and thirty-five participants of all ages. Messina read, uh, four thousand, two hundred and ninety-three books over the course of June, so great job yet again, Messina. We had five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine visits in June. As a grant update, I, I just want to expound a bit on, on Pat's comment on the, uh, Pilcrow Foundation Children's Book Project. That grant turned out better than I could have hoped. It was a matching grant, we had to provide four hundred dollars and they would provide eight hundred dollars in addition to that. But it would all come to us in the form of children's books and not money. Uh, so a big thanks to our friends at the library for supplying that four hundred dollars, we sent it in. We expected, as I said, twelve hundred dollars worth of children's books, which, um, when you do the math, came out to about seventy books. We ended up with over a hundred children's books that they sent us, and we are not talking the flimsy paperback scholastic books, which are wonderful, but they don't hold up forever. We are talking beautiful hardcover, new publication date children's books of all ages and great topics. I just really could not have hoped for better from that grant. Really happy about that. Let's see, oh, I want to, uh, suggest to the town board and that you look into attending the North Country Library Systems Annual Meeting. That is on September fifteenth, it is in Watertown, it is free, it is a free lunch, it's excellent food, I don't know how you can say no to free food. But, um, there are, it is filling up, there are eight seats left available. You can go to the North Country Library Systems website at NCLS dot O R G to register. And, uh, it really is a nice, uh, a nice meeting of everybody, it's a little convention, there are vendors there, there's lots of libraries represented. It includes not just the librarians, but trustees and, and a few members of the community as well. I think it would just be a great experience for everyone on the board to see, you know, what, what's going on among the libraries all around the North Country. We're all doing really great things. We had some really great programs that I'd like to highlight out of those numbers I gave you. Um, we were so lucky to partner with Bosse's to hold a career fair. Um, we had five employers that, that participated, and it attracted forty-five people, which I think is fantastic. And what gets even better is that they are willing to do this, um, at least twice a year, if not quarterly, uh, which I'm really happy about. Uh, we've recently conducted a community survey, and a lot of the concerns we've heard from the public is jobs. So it, it felt like, um, kismet, that we were able to connect with Bosse's to provide a job there and address that concern among the people of Messina. Um, our youth garden-to-table program, which is my little baby, I'm so proud of this program, uh, has seen... has seen, in, in the month of June, they met twice. There were 10 kids each time. They're having a great time. They picked out their own vegetables. They planted them. They went a little crazy and started planting some flower seeds randomly in the yard. So that'll be interesting. We'll see what happens there. They are actually going on the 24th, is it the 24th? I think it's the 24th, to the Nakandri Nature Center to participate in their Seed Sprout Grow Program. They're pretty excited about that. It's, and it's a nice collaboration because that program, the Garden-to-Table Program, is us collaborating with Cornell Cooperative Extension, and then further, we're collaborating with Nakandri. So it's kind of a really great organizational team effort. I'm also really proud to say that Cornell Cooperative Extension is doing a farmer's market slash cooking demo at the library on the 28th of this month. And that's from 1 to 3, and they'll just be in that little paved area behind, right directly behind the library. It won't be a huge thing, but a nice little farmer's market along with garden share. And then they'll use our Charlie cart to do a demonstration. NIFA is coming to do weatherization workshops on the 28th and the 29th. They always offer really great weatherization kits as part of their demonstrations and their talks. So I think that's, that's a really great one for people to attend. We, Jason pointed out the weather. We can use some weather, weatherization. I really want to put some emphasis on our youth summer reading program. It, it has kicked off and it is, it's shaping up to be pretty great. We had Belly Buttons the Clown last Friday. And I know this shows my inner child, but she is so funny. I, I just, I had a ball. I suppose the kids did too, but I had a ball. This Friday will be Wendy Clark. She is a local artist. She will be teaching puppet making. And they are the, the soft muppet-type puppets and not the, not the creepy marionettes that scare me. We have our Color Your World with Art every Monday until, like, mid-August, I think it is. That is at 2 o'clock, and that is with local artist Chris Rozell, who does a fantastic job. She is able to provide these workshops through a grant from the St. Lawrence Arts Council. So we, we give great thanks to them for helping keep that going. Lego Club is every Tuesday at 11 during the summer. The following Friday, so the 25th of July, Lena the Lizard Lady will be coming. And I, I know this isn't as exciting to you as it is to me, but I'm going to get to meet a sloth, so.
Two children or three children?
I don't know, but I'm going to count them.
I think she has a three.
Is it three?
I think it's a three.
I'm going to love it either way. So if you are, is excited about that idea, as I am, I really encourage you to come check it out. Rumor has it she also has a prairie dog, and that's pretty exciting, too. I love the reptiles, I really do, but I love me the furry cuddly ones. On August 1st, we are having Jeff Boyer do his bubble show. Thank you to the friends for funding that one. That, that was a little bit pricey, but it's worth it because it packs the library and then he packs children into bubbles, which is really interesting. If I'd known you could do that, I might have babysat more when I was a kid. But I didn't know. Tiny Art Show is going on consistently. You can stop by the library and pick up a little, it's literally a little miniature art kit. It has tiny little canvases with easels or clay. And you design it, and then we put it up on a display in the library. And I got to give the Messina Artists Association credit. They do fantastic art shows at the library. I'm so glad that they do. But man, I love that tiny art show that the kids do. It is so adorable. And I, I highly recommend you stop in and give it a look once it goes up. That is going until August 13th. So if you have some children who, who love to do art, send them down to get a kit because we'd love to have their art on display. We also have a bookmark contest running throughout that time. There's going to be prizes for all of this. And of course, there will be prizes for filling out a reading record for children and turning it in. And we have books, we have toys, we have Stuart's Ice Cream Gift Certificates. So it is worth it for your kid to read this summer. Let's see. What else? Oh, I really want to promote our Adopt a Book program. It has been going great. I will say it's been slowing down a little bit lately, but I want to encourage the community to please consider participating in that. It is really propping up our collection development. It's kind of crucial to, to what we're doing. And we are so grateful for everyone's help with it. Oh, I almost forgot. So Linda talked about the wonderful fishing tournaments, and we had a story walk set up at each of the two that have happened recently. We've gotten some new fishing books that we turned into story walks, and they're pretty adorable. And we had one up this past weekend, and we'll have another one up for the next one. And we'll have another one up for the next one after that. We're going to be there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love to hear all that positivity. That's wonderful. Before we go into executive sessions, is there anybody who needs to make a public comment?
Yeah.
Go see, go ahead.
I have a couple of quick questions. So for the last 28 years, I've lived in our neighborhood, and the town has always maintained the town-owned property on Shoreline Drive, mowing, re-wacking, maintaining the trees. Last year, it was stopped. And it looks like a jump right in the middle of a residential area. The neighbors have taken turns mowing the parcel on occasion, which would, I would think would present a liability issue. But they haven't been able to do everything, and it's still, I'd like to know why you stopped doing that.
Yeah, I'd like to find out about that, too. Don, remember?
You're talking about the first set of trees right there on the right?
Yeah.
Right where it is you turn on. Last year, we discovered that is owned by that property owner. That was pushed to a code issue.
No, I beg to differ, but I checked. And the property owner, before he bought the property, made sure he didn't own it. Had his lawyer check on it. And then he also said he would never want to take it over. And it still shows on the tax money that it belongs to the town and the city. Those trees and that section of grass.
Okay.
We'll have to call them, yeah. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anything else, Kristy?
Yep. I'd like to know how much the town charged the greenery, the trypene grove, for the installation of culvert and several loads of stone using the highway crew and town equipment for two days this spring.
The town in Messina doesn't charge for culverts to be installed anywhere. We, we do that for the purpose of making sure they're installed correctly.
Which I can understand, but I mean, that was, there are a couple loads of stone in there. There was your crew that spent two days working there and all your equipment. I don't, I don't think we should be in the, the town should be in the road building business on private property.
We didn't build road.
No, it looks pretty good looking on road.
We only went to the back through the ditch.
You got a good stone foundation in there, all the way leading probably, what, 25, 30 feet?
Not, not that far. We, we go to the back through the ditch. We've done that for any property owner for...
That's good to know, because somebody asked me about that, and they want to have it done on their property. So I guess they'll expect...
If they're on a town road, they can reach out, yes.
There we go.
Yeah, contact them. Okay, good, right.
And then why are those no parking signs gone on the trypene grove? I mean, that was Gary Edwards and his board years ago made that a no parking zone and put up signs. And then last year and again this year, they've just disappeared.
When did they come down?
They came down in 2022.
Again, I would think that. But aren't you concerned about the liability? I mean, the, the bill, the town board deemed it necessary to make it no parking, and then all of a sudden the signs are gone. If somebody were to get hit...
So the town board made it no parking?
Yeah.
Get with that one?
Gary Edwards and his board.
All right, let's take a look, move the research.
I mean, I'm just, you know, the employees are made to park out on the road. They're not, it's not, the shoulder's not wide enough. So they're halfway out on the road. So it's basically making it a one-lane road, coming down the trypene, coming down the ice hill. And it's dangerous. And I would think that a lawyer of an accident victim would just be holding his hand out for a check.
Let's check that out.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else, please? No, okay, at this point, need to go to executive session. I'll need a motion, please, for discussions related to proposed, pending, or current litigation, medical, financial, credit, or employment history, particular, personal corporation, or related to appointment, promotion, emotion, disant, removal, and acquisition, lease, or sale of real property or securities with publicity that substantiate effective value.
I'll make that motion.
Hey, ready for motion? It's 5:15. Second, please.
I'm second.
Kristy, any field on favor? Move to executive session, okay. Good. Thank you all very much for coming, especially...